Good morning. Let me, and thank everyone for coming to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting, our December 4th, 2017 meeting. Thank you all so very much. We're gonna start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. We're gonna be led in the invocation by Elder Jesse McNeil, who's a longtime educator in Cumberland County, but more important, she goes to Smith Chapel Free Real Baptist Church, which is my church. And for everybody who knows, there are a couple of ladies in town who've always been my surrogate mother. My mother passed back in 1984, but Dr. Jeanette Council, Ms. Ally Hollow, and Elder Jesse McNeil stepped in that role and guided me as I finished up that. So this being my last meeting as chair, I thought it was duly fitting that she do the invocation for us today. So Elder Jesse McNeil, if you come forth and give us our invocation.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, what an honor. Dear God, we greet you this morning. And as we greet you, we come remembering the fresh hours of the morning. We thank you for allowing us to be a part of this ordained day. We thank you for allowing your thoughts to flow through these commissioners and through the chairman. God, we thank you that as we look back through decades and you looked over favor with your roving eye and you knew you need some servants, servants of integrity, servants with commitment, service with ability, and you said, "I need some servants in Cumberland County." And these men and women stepped up and said, "I will go." And you have been with them, and this morning we thank you. We thank you for every man and woman who has served through the years. We thank you for the commitment they have given. And as they have been on this journey of service, as they have been your disciples, they were not serving us for accolades, they were not serving us for cheers on the back, but because they are committed to service. And we thank you. And as they go forth, as they continue to serve, as they continue to make pathways, we pray that you will bless every one of them, bless their families. And as we're praying this morning, we are praying for the very walls, the very halls, the very campus of this gigantic building. Every day, your servants come through the doors for different reasons, and we pray for your protection, that you will keep them safe night and day. And we thank you for Glenn Adams, as he led for the past two years. And as that gather of authorities pass this morning, we pray your blessings upon the next chairman, that you will continue to lead him. These and all blessings we ask in the precious name of your son, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Elder McNeil, if you come around, Elder McNeil, if you come right around this way.
Shake her. Come here. Come here this way. Come on. That's right.
You didn't get directions.
Look at that. Got enough film in there for him today.
He still got it. He still got it.
Now you see why I've been in such good hands throughout my life. When you can get a prayer like that, and they send up, and they were prayer warriors, that send up prayers throughout for me. And I thank them. Thank you so very much for coming in. We're now gonna have a recognition of the Cumberland County 911 Center, receiving the medical dispatch accreditation. Y'all can meet me at the podium.
Y'all see I'm dragging this out? I'm losing power today.
Y'all didn't hear that, did you? Okay. But y'all come around this way so they can see y'all. They need y'all more than me. I'm just here. This is a momentous day. The Cumberland County 911 Communications Center, boy, what an organization they are, has been designated as an accredited Center of Excellence for Emergency Medical Dispatch by the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. Randy Beeman, because of your leadership and all of your staff, was notified that we had received that. It is a high honor, but even more than that, we're going to next generation, next gen, 911, which links call 911 centers throughout the state. And that, my friends, is even bigger for this. And the one thing I've talked about during this whole year is how this county and its staff, the excellence that we bring and that they bring to us, and this is just another indication of that. And so we want to say thank you so very much, give you a few moments to introduce and to have some words.
After our picture, wait a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, and the management team. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to serve this county and also the support of the management team. That means so much, and that's the biggest part of being successful in our accreditation. And it's with great pleasure that it is not Randy Beeman, the Director of Emergency Services, that makes this happen. It is the staff. And it's a great honor to have Adam Johnson, who is the telecommunications manager of the organization, and it is also Christine Buchanan, who is the 911 Standards Coordinator. These folks make it happen every day, day in and day out. But it is not only these people, but it is the 40 telecommunicators that you as citizens and the traveling public that come through this county on a daily basis, they take those calls, and they handle the calls successfully, very efficiently, professionally, and they disseminate and send the right response groups or individuals to every call. And so it's with great pleasure that we are fully accredited organization in support of not only the citizens, but all of the elected as well as the management team. And so thank you so very much for this great honor today to see the folks perform professionally, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
It's not every day you get accreditation.
That's exactly right.
Well, every day you get a picture of Glenn.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Tracy, come on in. That's right. Let's get this done.
We inviting Tracy today?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you.
Let me take this opportunity, and I got all my commissioners up here, so they gonna help me. As I recognize folk, I saw our former sheriff, Sheriff Earl Moose Butler come in, Sheriff. Our Sheriff Ennis Wright, nice to see you here today. We've got our District Attorney, Mr. Billy West, here today. We've got our Registered Deeds, Mr. Lee Warren, here today. Breeding back Blackwell, who was a former commissioner, he's here today. Mr. George Breeze is here today. Always want to recognize Mr. Tom Council, who is Commissioner, Council.
Take my hoods.
I've got Ms. Lancaster, who wears, he's what, you said? She's your wife. There you go. And both y'all would stand up. Y'all stand up. I'm all in the, stand up. All right. And Mr. Council was formerly on the school board. We've got the superintendent, he tells me to say interim, but I just say superintendent, because I ain't got time to talk about interim, because they telling me I'm leaving too, Tim, so we'll go together. Superintendent Tim Kimlaw here today. Our school board attorney, David Phillips, David's leaving with me too. Everybody's leaving. David's going into private practice here in Cumberland County. He has a daughter that's in law school, and he preparing for her. And I do understand that. I got a son that's a first year in law school. So did I miss anybody, Commissioners? Did I get anybody? Oh, and I forgot, I got Ms. Frances Jackson, who's a magistrate. Raise your hand. Frances, stand up. Frances Jackson, who's a magistrate. And coming through the door is my good friend, Mr. Kurt Devier. I'm glad that he's here today. There he is.
Councilmember.
He's a councilmember. Councilmember Devier. So I think I got everybody that I needed to do right at that stage. I did miss, I didn't get my, one of my library people not here today? Did I miss a library person? Well, I'm the library trustee, so we got the library person here today. I've got some FTCC Board of Trustees members. If y'all was staying, where'd they get to?
Susanna.
There she is, yes. Oh, yeah, we just supported him. Thank you so very much. I saw her yesterday. And so we go into remarks from the chairman, and I think it was fitting recognizing those folk as I got into this. I got a whole thing, Jimmy, so just sit back with that. I got a whole, I got a whole script here. Told y'all I won't go in easy. I won't go in. The installation commander from Fort Bragg just stepped in. If he would stand and be recognized.
Oh, there you go. Thank you, sir.
He's in the camouflage back there. But you know, it's my philosophy when I took over from this board to celebrate people, jobs, and the staff. And I think we've done that. And for the people, my Board of Commissioners, thank you all for allowing me to do this for the past year. Without your support, the things that we achieved this year could not be done. If you get a chance, if you look at the screens throughout the building, you will see them flash up occasionally. We ended up having the Commissioners' photos in all the county buildings, because I think it's important for the citizens of this community to know who their leaders are. And you all do a fantastic job each and every day throughout these counties, so I want to say thank you. And we'll go on, and the PIO office has done me a wonderful job in terms of this. But so people, jobs, we had a lot of ribbon cuttings that we went through throughout this year. This is at Piedmont Natural Gas. We did those throughout the year, and I'll tell you about that when we get to the economic development. And staff, you saw this morning that we recognized the 911, but we recognize people throughout the year. The Health Department, Rod Jenkins and those, in terms of the accreditations they got over at the Sheriff's Department with the jail and the reaccreditation throughout this community, this staff, led by Amy Cannon and her staff. And I want to thank you all for being able to do that and make us look good. But you know, I will tell you that before I get started, I could not have done this. There are a few people that I really want to recognize, because people say I was all over this county. I could not be all over this county by myself without some help. So I'd ask Cindy and Carolyn and Iva and Nika, would y'all please stand? You all don't understand. Yeah, y'all give him a big round of applause. Y'all keep standing. These ladies coordinated my schedule so that I was everywhere I was supposed to be a little bit ahead of time. And if you don't understand how difficult it is to be able to coordinate, you talk to them for just a moment. But they were, did yeoman's work. And I just want to say thank you, because I think I want you to know how much I appreciate you. Thank you so very much. And you know, every Commissioner Booth will understand this one. Every first Monday, like today, we usually are upstairs doing what we do, Mr. Booth. We do, I do have a day job. People don't believe I have a day job, but I really do have a day job. And it conflicts when we do admin with this particular committee. And Jamelle George, if you stand up, if it was not for my good friend Jamelle George, who they now call Attorney Glenn Adams all around the county, for stepping in, for stepping in and being there when I needed, when I had to be down here to be able to do that. My staff knew that they could always call him, and it's always, you know, the Lord always said, "There's a ram in the bush." And those folk that I just talked about were the rams in the bush. So thank you so very, very much. The handsome Glenn Adams is what they said. Okay. Boy, Mr. Booth said, "All right, keep him down on the..."
The more fit Glenn Adams.
And more fit Glenn. Okay. So y'all know, y'all know for the whole year, Mr. Keith would not keep up with the challenge. We had a challenge going on, but he's been working out, but he's not quite there yet. He hadn't called me up to do our long jump, so.
Any day, anytime, Mr. Chairman.
So we got off this year, we started early. And Sheriff Ennis Wright, if you stand up. One of the first things, it's been a year, and people forget, we started off the year appointing Mr. Sheriff Ennis Wright as our new sheriff of this county. And I want to say, you've done an excellent job. Continue to do the work you done. Sheriff Butler, your recommendation was spot on. Thank you so very much for what you do. That's where we started at. And that's about as good as it got, because right after that, we went into budget season. And you know, we started off with the manager coming by and telling us we about $4.8 million that we needed to reduce, and that was the reduction we had in taxable values. Hard decisions had to be made regarding the expenditure reductions. And Amy Cannon, please stand. I want to thank County Manager Amy Cannon, the budget staff, please, with the budget staff, y'all stand up. And our department here, is all you department here, stand up. Y'all thought y'all were just here today. Everybody's gonna stand up there. Y'all gonna get y'all exercises today. For doing an excellent job with our budget and being proactive for years to come. Ultimately, the county developed a budget that was physically responsible and that still provides core services to residents and fundings to community organizations. Everybody up here that's sitting here wants to say thank you for what you did and for what you continue to do each and every day. Why y'all not standing? Where, where, why y'all not standing? Oh, Lord, I see, I still have a little bit of power. It's slipping, but I still have a little bit of power. And we'd like to welcome our new Assistant County Man, Dwayne Holder, that is here. Thank you all for what y'all do every day. You know, every time, people don't necessarily take that opportunity to do that, but they do. Thank you so very much. And I always want to thank my county clerk, who alone with that staff over there kept us on time every day and kept us right where we wanted to be. You know, I was telling you, there's some folk in your life that just tell you where you need to be, and you just don't question it, you just do that. Economic developments, I think I saw Robert Van Gheens here. By the end of this year, stand up, Robert. I tell you, everybody gotta stand up. The camera gonna swing that way at some point. The Fable Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation, we expect to announce that more than 700 full-time jobs, full-time and part-time jobs, and over 50 million in investment in our community for 2017. Mr. Booth, you see these pictures? I have them everywhere. Examples include E Clerk, which opened to an operational delivery center in July that expected to employ more than 100 people. The board approved an incentive grant not to exceed 37,500. The board approved incentives in September for advanced community learning, a computer education and software company, which is adding 75 jobs and expanding its downtown headquarters. If you look up here, with my hat about to fall off, we were out at the solar farms in Hope Mills. We've got two of the largest solar farms, and one of them is the largest one east of the Mississippi. These innovative solar 46 farms are a testament to what we're doing in this community. And Project Nano, too, we hope to have that. We've proved the centers for a distribution center that will create 140 new full-time jobs and over $40 million to this community. Recognizing that many groups are charged with marketing our community, I assembled early on the leaders of the Tourism and Development Board, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Crown Complex. I saw my Crown person stand up. Where'd he get to? There he is. He trying to hide back there. The Arts Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Fable Cumberland County Economic Development Board to discuss ways to increase our collaboration and effectiveness. The vision for a unified, overachieving brand has taken root, and this structured conversation has grown in to include representations of the city of Fable, the Coos Springs District, and the private sector. In the months ahead, these local partners will be combining their energies and resources in this new way to showcase the best of Cumberland County's arts, economic, history, and cultural assets. The one thing I talked about when I came on here is we need to get out of these silos. We need to start collaborating with each other. We started, needed to start coming together, and that's why this organization and these groups of people came together. The marksmen, I don't know if they're here, our hockey team. Earlier this year, we were at risk of losing our hockey team franchise at the Crown Complex. But the county, in partnership with those folk, Fable Area Conventions and Visitors Bureau, the Tourism and Development- Bureau, the Tourism and Development Authority didn't let that happen. And in August, the new owners of our hockey team rebranded the franchise as the Fayetteville Marksmen, and they kicked off their season this fall. Please go see your local hockey team. In addition, the TDA has approved $75,000 over three years to support institutional marketing of our three teams out at the Crown. The Marksmen, the Cape Fear Heroes Indoor Arena Football Team, and the Rogue Roller Derby. The county has also achieved financing for $2.75 million that will be used to replace the ice floor, add LED lighting around the Coliseum, and install a modern center-hung scoreboard. These improvements are expected by the end of the year. Is that right? Physical year. Not year, I'll give you a little bit more time out there to be able to do that. Cape Fear Valley's health residency program. This has started under the Mr. Commissioner Faircloth when we did that. And we actually brought the residents in. Marshall, thank you for your leadership on that. The Board of Commissioners approved the transfer of the county's E. Newton Smith and the Executive Place facilities to Cape Fear Valley Health Center to accommodate the new residency program. The Commissioners serve as hospital trustees, and we are so excited about Cape Fear Valley's health residency program that will train doctors right here in our region with the hope that they will stay and practice here. The class kicked off in August with 32 residents. This program is expected to bring $300 million to our area over the next 10 years by creating jobs and being residents and instructors here to live and work. Research shows that 50% will stay here and live here where they receive their training. And even on that, yesterday, I was out at AHEC yesterday, and they cut the ribbon on their new building, which will provide healthcare in this region to a nine-county region, and that happened yesterday. With education, boy, I tell you, Federal Tech, your trustees, please stand. Those trustees for Federal Tech, I told you, it's everybody today. We are so proud of Federal Technical Community College and the track record for their job placement. The more current figures show that graduates from 2015 to 2016, almost 93% were employed within three to six months, and almost 75% were employed in Cumberland County. FTCC opened its new Law Enforcement Emergency Management Center on November the 20th. The center houses the basic, they can come on in. Tell them, come on in. The center houses the basic law enforcement training academy and the law enforcement training. FTCC has provided office space for the Federal Cumberland County Economic Corporation, and I want to thank Dr. Larry Keen for his services to the Federal Cumberland County Economic Development. We also thank Methodist College and Federal State University for the economic impact that they have in this community and for their graduates who stay in this community. But you know, the one thing, every meeting that we did, even in meeting, I have to give hats off to my Federal Cumberland County Youth Council. Thanks to Crystal Glover and all the FCYC members for their work in our county, and congratulations to them for winning two state awards this year. They won the 2017 Most Diverse State Youth Council Award from the North Carolina State Youth Council. Josh Jensen, who is the Commissioner Keith's nephew, everybody's in there. Stand up now, I want everybody to stand up. Received the North Carolina State Youth Council Most Outstanding Member Award. Great things are happening right here in Cumberland County. And then we turn to the Hurricane Matthew recovery. I think Commissioner Keith said it well. The storm comes, we weather the storm, but it was the recovery that we would be judged by. I want to thank our PIO office. If you have not seen the video that they did, you're missing a treat. I would have played it today, but we can't be here all day. Our county continues to recover from the devastation of Hurricane Matthew in October 2016. You're having a good time, Matthew. Just last week, on November the 30th, an application center opened in the Department of Social Services for Community Development Block Grant. Disaster recovery applications, Cumberland County has been awarded $13.5 million to help those individuals who qualify, recover, and rebuild. Stream Debris Grant, in August, the county received a $500,000 Golden Leaf Grant for storm debris removal from Rockfish and Little Rockfish Creek. In October, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services awarded the county $1.2 million for debris removal from the South River, Sandy Creek, and Locks Creek Stream Bed. The Cumberland County Disaster Recovery Coalition, I don't think I saw Brenda Jackson here, but this was after our last tornadoes that came through. This coalition was formed. It continues to work to meet the unmet needs in our county. Our social services, emergency management, and community development departments are working closely with a group of volunteers, and I want to thank the church organizations and other groups for their hard work. The flood damage at the headquarters library was repaired, and the Friends of the Library book sales returned. Where's Jeffrey at? Jeffrey, thank you, Jeffrey. Stand up now. I tell you, everybody's standing up today. In terms of, because I'm a library trustee, so I have to talk about my library. And our library, it's not mine, it's our library. Make sure, my wife tell me, "Quit saying mine." It's ours. She does. I told you, it's always good. She says, "You like that my word, it's ours." So it's our library. Public health, public safety, health, and well-being, let's go there. The county's 911 Communication Center, you just saw that, has been designated the Credit Center of Excellence for Emergency Medical Dispatch by the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. The county's new emergency management notification system, Cumberland Alerts, went live in August. If you got your phones, go and sign up for Cumberland Alerts. It's very, very important. The Public Task Force, and I would thank Commissioner Keith for reminding us about the Public Safety Task Force and our county manager, Amy Cannon. Well, that was re-instituted in February and will bring forth recommendations on improving services as we approach the budget process for the year 2019. The Department of Social Services kicked off an initiative to improve services to youth aging out of foster care as well as child welfare and family support programs in October. DSS has worked for the last two years to develop the initiative, which is called "A MALL Approach to Child Welfare." DSS received grants from the Duke Endowment and the Causey Family Program. And I will tell you, as I've sat here, I've talked about the more than 800 to 1,000 kids in foster care, and that for community, we find that unsustainable. And we will not rest until that number is brought down. And I want to thank Brenda Jackson and all they did. We've been meeting for well over a year. It is not a simple solution. It is not something that's gonna happen overnight. We didn't get in it overnight. We're not gonna get out of it overnight. But I will tell you, with this board, we will get out of it. The Department, our Department of Public Health is, oh, this is a big one. I like this one. It's collaborating with Stedman Wade, I like them all, huh? With Stedman Wade Health Services Incorporated to provide adult primary care services and dentistry for both adults and children. They're coming into our Health Department. And on Merks and Road, Stedman Wade just ribbon cut for a new complex on Merks and Road, which will revitalize our district over in District 1. The Commissioners approved contracting with South Health Partners to provide jail health services, and that has been a win-win for everybody. I think our sheriff and will attest to that. We want to thank the board for being able to do that. Collaboration and communications are essential in building a strong community and achieving more for everyone. I believe that we need to more fully embrace the county motto, "Out of many, one." With that in mind, I made it a priority this year to bring together and sit down with various groups to work on various issues. While I understood that we could not accomplish everything in one year, and I think we've had some discussion, and I hope this board really takes it to heart, that this ought to be a two-year chairmanship as opposed to a one-year. By the time you get in here, you're in the budget season, and then it's all downhill. And some of my Commissioners tell me that it moves quickly. I didn't know how fast it moved. But with that in mind, I made it a priority this year to bring together and sit down with various groups to work on various issues. Over the course of several months, we have met with the court system officials, Alliance Behavior Healthcare, Sheriff's Office Detention Center staff, Cape Fear Valley Health, and jail health staff to discuss improving communications and procedures and how we deal with individuals who have mental health issues. In addition, we've met with court system and social services representatives to look at our youth group homes. And last month, we approved consolidating services into one home. We moved our pre-trial services office to the community corrections building on West Russell Street to give them more space and allow them to focus on their core functions if they would stand up. That's Caroline and Ms. Calley. Thank you so very much. We moved them out, and I think that they are doing wonderfully well. Don't sit down yet. They run our diversion program. Our misdemeanor diversion program continues to grow with the help of partners from the Sheriff's Office and all the municipal law enforcement, the District Attorney, Mr. West, if you stand, and our district courts. And I think we've got Alicia Marks, if you stand up, who's also in the District Court Office. Alicia Marks, thank you all for the misdemeanor diversion program. It gives kids a second chance in this community. And I will say, as you stand up, Mr. West, thank you all, that with the assistance of the Vice Chairman and his lead, it was not me, this was his lead, we had an expungement clinic here, right here in Cumberland County. Charles, thank you so very much for leading that. That gives people, and Mr. West, and the public defender, and all of those, and District Court Robert Steele, thank you all so very much for leading that because that gives people in this community, the citizens, a second chance to be able to take care of their families and become productive citizens in this community. Thank you so very much for that. But even before, you know, we talking about Gen X. You saw it in the paper this morning. But even before the news broke regarding Gen X and the state's ongoing investigation, we had been meeting with PWC officials to look at options for bringing water to areas of our county. Gen X has just put those discussions on the front burner and has accelerated our discussions on that matter. We just met last week with the school system and PWC in terms of that. We will take care of these citizens in Graves Creek and out near that plant. The county is partnering with the City of Fayetteville on the pathways for prosperity initiative to battle poverty. Where's Councilman Kurt Devier? Stand up, Kurt. I tell you, everybody's standing up today. And he doesn't want to stand up, but he will. Kurt, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to acknowledge you and the successful summit that we held November the 18th that brought more than 200 people together to outline key focus areas for going forward. They are finding ways to align workforce training with industry needs. It talks about education, improving K-12 and early childhood education, creating programs for parent education and mentoring, and creating more affordable housing. You remember when I sat in this chair a year ago, we talked about poverty. It's not anything, again, that came in overnight. It's not gonna go out overnight. This is a two-to-three-year process and ongoing, but it's the commitment of everybody in this county that has to buy into us being able to do this. We want the best for our citizens and for our kids. When it comes down to the point that our kids born today are gonna be worse off than their parents, that's a sad indictment, and we will not have that in this county. We move on to infrastructure. 2017 also marked a historic occasion with the Cumberland County Courthouse being redamed, the Judge E. Mars Braswell Cumberland County Courthouse. Judge Braswell was instrumental in the construction of this courthouse, which opened in 1978. His name was installed above the Cumberland County Courthouse lettering on the front of the building, and a bronze plaque was installed inside the front entrance of the courthouse. I'd like to thank Judge Ammons and Lee Warren for bringing that to us and bringing that petition. Lee, if you'll just stand up. Thank you so very much for doing that. 11.2 million over three years in capital improvement plan financing was approved in September. Work has started on parking lots and repaving and roof repair. You've got to maintain what you have before you can go forward, and that's one of the things of our capital improvement budget. In July 2017, solid waste management. And I don't see my solid waste man. He's probably out there at the Wilkes Road trying to figure out what's going on with that smoking out there. But in 2017, July, solid waste management started the sale expansion of sales nine and 10. That's important for this community because once that landfill is full, what do we do next? And if everybody, I think Commissioner Faircloth and Keith and Council were here, when they say, "What, not in my backyard? I don't want a landfill in my backyard." It's a big decision that's gonna be made. The department has also implemented several changes to improve operations and services at our landfills and container sites. We move on to engagement and communication. The Public Information Office, Information Services, where's that staff? Stand up, Sally and your staff. We expanded that operation. The rest of them out getting ready to take my picture when I go out. They got two more. They got two more. They out, they ready, they ready. Larch County newly, let me give you some water now, see. Do you like it, huh? It's not the end of this. I got some more. I got more, y'all. I told you, Commissioner Keith and Commissioner Faircloth and Commissioner Counsel said that power gonna slip away. So I said, "I'm gonna take it slow." I know y'all ready back there in the back, and we get you back there in a few minutes. The Public Information Office, Information Services, I've still got this gavel right here. I'm good. I can sit here all day. Jamel left to go take care of my stuff upstairs. I'm good. My day job is covered. My staff is here. Larch County's new designed website and upgraded our broadcasting equipment. Information Services has also led to conversion to Novus Agenda Software, and y'all know that is very good. It makes life so much easier for us, which has improved the agenda creation process and made our agenda easier to search online. We've reached out to the municipalities and the appointed boards and commissions and held three sessions of effective board management training in March. Did you bring my chicken? You didn't bring my chicken. She didn't bring my chicken. Anybody who went to that will understand what I talk about if you didn't. Lee Warren, so he's gotta go back to work. The rest of y'all can't leave, though. Three sessions of effective board management training in March for elected officials and appointed members of the county member mini advisory board. Parks and Recreation Projects, I tell you, our municipalities are excited. Godwin broke ground on the expansion of town halls. See me right there, Mr. Booth, right there. See, the rest of them don't know how to look up. See how I look up? I got that down pat now. Yeah, you looking up, too. You got it down. Wade is expanding his building, and staff has met with Stedman, Linden, Falcon on other projects that on the horizon. General Government. In July, the county refunded, refinanced a series of certificate of participation and other bonds which achieved better-than-expected results for a total net present value savings of just over $2 million. That savings equates to an average annual interest savings over the next 12 years of approximately $166,000. And although Cumberland County experienced many wonderful achievements this year, 2017 was not without its challenges. I've already mentioned the budget. But going forward, water in this community, Gen X, the Kamores' situation is a challenge. The inner water basin transfer, to me, is as big or bigger a challenge. If we allow Kerry and Raleigh to continue to take water out of the Cape Fear River and put it into the New River Basin, we have only seen the demise of eastern North Carolina. We need to be leaders in that. And I applaud Mick Nolan, he's not here. And PWC, we've got a lawsuit going on now that addresses that issue. But I will tell you, there are always visionaries in your community. And she has passed on, but Senator Laura Tally, over 20 to 30 years ago, talked about transfer of water out of the Cape Fear River. She was ahead of her time. But we cannot now allow that to transform into what Raleigh and the I-85 corridor wants to do. If we want economic development in this community, if we want the livability of this region, and the reason I say this region is that Cumberland County ought to lead this region. I think that we are poised to do that. We've got things in place to do that, and it's time for Cumberland County to take its place among the leaders of the state of North Carolina. The 911 Call Project, you see it on our agenda today. I have been reached out from the city... I have been reached out from the city for some additional discussions. That's not going to happen prior to today, there is some changeover in city council. But that's important to this community. I do believe we need a consolidated 911 call center project. Volunteer fire departments. If you know anything about volunteer fire departments, when we were a rural community and people were out in the farms and they could get off their tractors and they could go to the fire station to be able to answer a call, those days, my friends, are slowly evaporating. People don't necessarily work where they live. And so I think not just for this community, but for the state of North Carolina, there has to be some discussions on volunteer fire departments. I do applaud all of our volunteer fire departments here. Our liaison to the fire departments, Commissioner Keith, he's led that conversation. Our county manager, Amy Cannon, understands that we've had some discussions with our delegation. Those days are changing and we need to be ahead of the curve on that. Sales tax is still a challenge in this community and we will have a conversation with that. I talked to Kurt Devier, poverty. If we don't get a handle on poverty, we can't lead anywhere. Again, more than 900 children in foster care is just unacceptable. Opiates, cocaine, mental health is a challenge in our community. We have to get a handle on it. And I tell you, some of the folk will understand this, space in our courthouse is at a premium and that is a challenge. We had the facilities meeting last week and I will tell you that we're going to conquer that also. And the last thing is that things come out of Washington DC, everything gets passed down. And I will tell you, tax reform and block grants are going to be a challenge for this board and for every board and for every local municipality and county throughout the United States. And we have to be ahead of there. But the one thing about challenges is there's a great team and this team and the county staff that will meet those challenges head on. I look out here and I tell our citizens, there is no better team that you've assembled than the one up here. I am proud to have served as your chairman and I am proud to represent the citizens of Cumberland County. Thank you so very much. And I do want to thank Charles Evans for serving as my vice chair this year. Those places that I couldn't go, those meetings that we were in together, thank you so very much for your assistance and your help and every one of the board members. I did see our chairman of our school board, Mr. Greg West, come in and how did Mr., let me see how Ray said it. We were at a meeting the other day and his partner was there and they did a name tag for him. And they said, this is Ray, Greg West's partner, and that the way he said it, thank you for coming today. So now we will go to elections of our officers. We will elect our chairman, I'll call on Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hard to follow that kind of laudatory remark, but we've got to move on. And our next chairman is going to be an individual that I have known since my school board days. And when I talk about school board days, I'm also talking about Commissioner Booth and Tom Counsel is sitting down on front row. The three of us were on that school board that was elected back in the 80s. It was the first elected school board of the merged school system in Cumberland County. So we had, we had a, we had some big shoes to fill, I guess you could say, and we had a great time. But I first met this individual who was a principal at that time and one of our best principals and one who was always eager to please and to serve. And I remember when I, when I first got to talk to principals and I was chairman that first year and I, and I told them in a group, I basically said, if I have a problem in your school, do you want me to call you or do you want me to call the superintendent? And Larry was probably one of the first ones that said, please call me. And I, if I had, if I had a situation in Larry's school or any other school, the principals were just always ready to take care of the things in their building and do the right thing. But, but as you, as you move into this chairmanship, you never, you never know. Glenn touched on a lot of the things that we'll be talking about next year. And I will tell you, this is one group that loves to plan. And we, if we, if we could, we'd plan everything that, that, that would go on. But the old Jewish proverb or saying that used to say, well, man makes his plans and God laughs. You know things are not always going to go as planned. And always used to, used to say that we know the scud missiles are going to be coming in. Of course, that's kind of, that was, that was an old term, no one will talk about missiles anymore now. But, but as we look ahead to next year, we have a gentleman who has stepped up and he brings, he brings experience of 18 years on our Board of Education. And I know how difficult that is, I served one term and that, that was just about enough for me. And, and, and he's, and he's been on the Board of Commissioners for three years. So he has, he has the insight of a long, long life and very productive life of public service to be proud of. And at this time, I would like to place a nomination for chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Educat, Board of Commissioners. Sorry Greg, you're still saying. For the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Larry Lancaster.
I call him Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also sharing that, not the same 18 years, but the endurance factor of the 18 years. I've always found Larry to be probably one of the most prepared people going forward on seeing both sides. Some of us can't see both sides, Larry sees all sides. He's always well-prepared, he's kind-hearted and he's just a heck of a fine gentleman. So I'd like to second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. We're going to take a 30-minute break right about now? No, I'm only joking.
And Glenn's got another summary?
All those in favor? John, picture over here now.
Guess who's your vice chair now?
Anybody have any tissues, this is going to be tough for Glenn. Thank you, thank you so much, what an honor. At this time, we would move to accept a nomination for vice chair. Mr. Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to place in the nomination the name of Commissioner Jeanette Counsel. And you know, words cannot really come to mind because when you talk about, I will tell you when I was chairman, all the former chairs, I thank them for that, but the guidance that you get when you've got somebody who has institutional knowledge that can tell you and look you in the face and say, that's wrong, you don't do that, stop, stop. And you know when to stop. And, and I will say that she has guided me since I've been on this board. We serve in District One together and I think the people of District One are well-served by Commissioner Counsel. And I place her name in the nomination for vice chair.
Okay, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to second that motion of Commissioner Counsel for a number of reasons that Glenn had mentioned. But for one, for one good reason, she's an effective commissioner and she's also effective to this board in so many ways. She is definitely the person that take care and keep everything ended together here on this board. And I believe I can speak on behalf of all the members on this board that we appreciate everything that she does. And so it is with great honor that I second that motion.
Mr. Fairclough.
Mr. Chair, I'd move nominations be closed and Ms. Counsel be elected by nomination. I mean, actually.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
It's unanimous.
I'm ready.
Moving next door.
You get twice as much.
Cut off my button, please, I don't talk as much as y'all.
Well, this time we have a few presentations. This time, Mr. Adams is going to be recognizing our outgoing chairman, Commissioner Evans.
Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I don't know how he's going to shake his hand with himself.
Charles, you come down, please. Thank you. Mess with me, will you? You know, this does give me great honor and pleasure to be able to do this. Again, you know, I talk about celebrating people and we've done that this whole year. But the things that were achieved in this county could not be achieved, one, by all of this board, but by the vice chair that stood beside me, kept me, called me up and said, hey, you need to move this way, you need to move that way. That's what it is, it's a team, it's all of us working together to be able to do that. And it does give me great honor and I'll read this plaque to you because I designed it. Yeah, you'll like it, see. It says, presented to Charles E. Evans. And I want y'all to know, Charles and I went to elementary school together. So we go back a long, long way. So if you really want to know the stories, just call me. Presented to Charles E. Evans in recognition of your service as vice chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, serving with Commissioner Glenn B. Adams, got the name on there, December 5th, 2016 through December 4th, 2017, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, this the fourth day of December 2017. So you know what happens is it takes all of us, each one of us comes from different backgrounds. We have different likes and dislikes, but when you join it all together, it's what makes this county so much better. We agree, we disagree, but we did it in harmony. And it was all because we had a goal of moving this county forward. And I want to thank you so very much for that.
Good morning. I'm not going to stand before you long because I think Glenn's taking all my time. But and speaking of, speaking of our chairman, he's absolutely right. We went to elementary school together and at that time, he was still running things. And, but to serve as vice chairman under his leadership and also with the rest of my colleagues have been a complete honor. And I am so grateful to be afforded the opportunity to continue to serve the citizens as your vice chair. Thank you so much and may God bless each and every one of you.
You're holding this picture, come down. Come on down, Charles. Come on, buddy.
He said you're holding.
Oh, yeah. Hey. Hold on, Charles Warren. Go with a smile. Hey, by the way, I'm sure you designed this, did you?
No, I can't, the clerk did that one.
Well, obviously, you've had a, you've had a chance today to see a lot that Glenn has accomplished. With a lot of good help behind him. And we make a lot of jokes with Glenn about his day job, but I can tell you the truth. We've been here many days and it's been late and Glenn said, I got to go to my day job. But I can tell you this, a lot of days, this was his day job. And you can say what you want to about Glenn Adams, but he's a man of enthusiasm, he's a man of commitment, he's a man of passion, he's a family man and you can always count on Glenn. You may not always agree with Glenn, but I tell you what, in the end, in the end, he's been a true gentleman and Glenn is a man of his word and it's my pleasure today to present to you. And I don't know if you have enough film left in.
Not too high, not too high now. I'm going to get you straight now, I'm going to teach you how to do this, alright.
I'm teachable, I'm coachable, you got that. But here's what it says, it's presented to Glenn B. Adams, B.
That's right.
Glenn what?
Booth.
Glenn Brian.
Booth Adams, yeah.
Booth Adams. In grateful appreciation of your leadership as chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December 5th, 2016, to the rest of your life, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Thank you and God bless you, Glenn.
I appreciate that. You didn't think I had a speech down here, Charles? Thank you all.
I believe there's a picture of Glenn on Charles's plaque.
It truly is a remarkable honor to be chosen as chairman of the county commissioners and I accept this responsibility out of great respect to this board and also the citizens of Cumberland County. And I want to thank Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Charles Evans for their service as chairman and vice chairman over the past year. And I look forward to working with commissioners and the county staff and all the municipalities and other community stakeholders in coming months. I wanted to outline some priorities that I had, but Glenn's already done them. So I want to talk about water, but he talked about water. And very seriously, this is and must be a priority for our county. In the year 2017 or in any year, it is unthinkable that people in our society and in our county and our state and our country, they do not have clean water. It's almost a criminal act. And we are committed, those to my right and those to my left, that we're going to do everything that we can do in conjunction with our state agencies to make sure that anything in respect to health risks to our citizens that might affect our county and especially the children and our families. And Mr. Kenlaw is in the back and he can tell you today, no reason in the world for our children or anybody, any parent, to send their children to school of the day and they're having to drink out of bottled water. It's unthinkable and Mr. Kenlaw, with your help and with the state's help and PWC's help, we intend to do something about it. And to that end- And to that end, there will be a meeting on December the 14th at Grace Creek High School from 6 o'clock to 7:30. It's gonna be about Gen X. And we hope that you tell your neighbors and those folks and those neighborhoods that need to be there to speak their mind, we want to encourage them to be there. And I can promise you that our county management team, engineering and health leadership teams have already made initial steps in researching it and developing an action plan to put all this together. Glenn talked also about economic development. Um, we're gonna be strong in economic development. The capital improvement plan that he talked about, about $18 million. And we've already made some good inroads in the last couple of days of providing some space here in this courthouse and that will continue, uh, as we move along. Uh, Public Safety Task Force, Glenn also mentioned that. And he was especially strong on the volunteer fire departments. And as we work with that task force, it was reinstituted last year. Uh, and this group is scheduled to come back to us with some recommendations in the coming months and regarding the funding of fire service in our county. And finally, as we look forward to other issues, I wanna, uh, set a, as soon as we can work this out, we're gonna have a goal-setting session one day. So each of us can carefully consider and establish a state and a slate, I'm sorry, a slate of priorities for the coming year. And I wanna do this early in the year. I've already talked to Sally about this. So we can get together and as, uh, commissioners, we can sit down and see how we're gonna move and what direction and, uh, and move forward. Having said that, at this time, Madam, uh, County Manager, do we have any changes in the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that we remove item 6A and defer that to another time for discussion, please.
Okay. Item, item 6A has been removed. Do we have a, an approval on the agenda? A vote, please?
So moved, Mr. Chu.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That gets us to consent agenda, any, agenda, anything's to be, anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That's unanimous. That takes us to nominations. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the Fairville Commonwealth Economic Development Corporation, I would nominate, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. That was yours.
No.
Kevin Farmer for, uh, Economic, uh, Development Corporation.
Any others? Okay. We have no appointments at this time. Um, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Um, we would like to invite everyone to please stay for the reception, uh, behind us. Um, and if there are no other items to come before this group.
Will we adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank everyone for coming. God bless you. Let's go eat.